Okay, it's 5:02. I'm gonna call a Loudoun County Commission meeting for June 29, 2020 to order. This is a little different tonight. We've got some county business we gotta conclude. Normally, we just do budget adoption on the last Monday of June. So Jim Jenkins, come on up and tell us about the two zoning resolutions.
Sir, first is a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 of Tennessee Code Annotated, to rezone approximately 14.4 acres from R1 Suburban Residential District to R1 Suburban Residential District with a PUD overlay. Loudoun County Tax Map 007, Parcels 002.04, 002.05 located at Hickory Creek Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee situated in the 5th Legislative District.
Thank you. Next one.
A resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 of Tennessee Code Annotated, to rezone approximately 38.1 acres from A2 Rural Residential District to A1 Agricultural Forestry District with a T1 overlay. Loudoun County Tax Map 056, Parcel 181.00 located at 5378 Steaky Creek Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee situated in the 4th Legislative District.
Thank you, Jim. We'll vote on those in just a few moments. Two people have signed up to speak on the zoning resolutions. Tim Amos, step up to the podium and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you again. The only thing that I'd like to add from my comments from the workshop is we have gone out into the community and received 39 signatures in opposition to this proposed tower. The only reason I don't have more is because I stopped visiting because I only had two residents that did not sign, and it wasn't because they wanted the tower. They were just seniors who didn't want to get involved, and they were very cordial and understood the situation. But we faced no opposition from property owners face to face. So anyway, we've brought support. That was what was tasked to me, and I think that we've delivered on that. And so we oppose this tower for a myriad of reasons, not the least of which is the aesthetics, possible effect on property values, the nuisance because of its size, 24-hour strobes. I don't feel that alternate sites have been considered, and there's been no proof because I did examine the documents provided to the zoning commission, and I found no actual proof in there that it's actually necessary. It's just a statement from them stating that they want to build a tower. So I feel, I've tried to find some legal language here to kinda go along with my feelings on that. They failed to demonstrate that alternate sites and technologies will not provide adequate coverage for the area in question. And we do not feel that the tower is compatible with the current uses of the land, and it will not be harmonious with the current uses of the land. So that's all I have, and I would appreciate your support in helping us oppose this tower if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell Rackney, Rackley?
Good afternoon, Commission. I'm Russ Rackley, the applicant representing the property owner and the developer, Homestead Land Holdings for the PUD overlay on Hickory Creek Road. At the last meeting at the workshop, it was, brought our attention that the desire was to deny the request because of the lack of sewer present available on the property. And the code that was referenced was Page 117 of Loudoun County Zoning Resolution 5.050, Planned Unit Development Overlay District. And when, in reading that, and the reason why I disagreed with Mr. Shaver was because when I reviewed your codes, I didn't see where it said, "In order to rezone, sewer had to be present." And in fact, 5.05, and I have copies here, says that, "Plans shall exhibit characteristics that demonstrate a comprehensive understanding of the land and surrounding uses, incorporating an analysis of physiographic and natural features of the site, comma, public utility availability, transportation access and capacity, compatibility with surrounding land uses." forward on a piece of property that's zoned with the PUD overlay, that sewer availability So it says that plans shall exhibit, and so that infers to me that under the description has to be taken into consideration. And we feel that we have met that by analyzing the sewer, by working with LCV and their of the cans and cannots of the PUD overlay district, that these are things that have desire to serve 36 units and more from all the other properties to extend their sewer to be included in your PUD plan that's submitted through the, at least two, if not three, different BZA votes to approve the plan at each stage of moving forward. So the question becomes, what does availability mean? availability down that way. I would like to enter as an exhibit, as part of the public record, a letter from Leon Shields So the other items on this is transportation access and capacity. from LCV stating the availability of sewer in this area, if it pleases. I'd like to enter into, as an exhibit, as part of the public record, a traffic impact study for 36 residential units on our property performed by Ajax Engineering, July 12 of this year. And the, it's, I only brought one copy. It's 86 pages, but very quickly, the study results conclude the addition of the projected residential development trips is not anticipated to appreciably reduce traffic operations on Hickory Creek Road. Hickory Creek has an asphalt width of 19 to 20 feet, which is more than adequate for the existing traffic on that road and for the 400 or so trips per day heading that direction that the traffic impact study showed. And again, I apologize, I only brought one copy, but I'll be happy to email it to anyone or to James, and he can, James, and he can spread it around. And finally, compatibility with the surrounding land uses. When you look at the Loudoun County Growth Plan, it does have this area designated as planned growth. PUD overlay in an R1 is planned growth. So it would seem that we are in harmony with the county's anticipated use of this area. And admitted, right down the road is Avalon, which is a very large development, so residential housing is not out of question for the use down there. And what the PUD overlay allows is for us to yield about six more units versus developing as it is, which will help cover the cost of sewer. And most buyers today don't want drain fields and septic. They want sewer. So with that, I respectfully ask that you approve our request to put the PUD overlay on this property, and be happy to answer any questions. Their estimate two years ago was $350,000, and I think that was, that was a, their engineer put that together. That was a number that the engineer could never be wrong with, I think. I think once we get through the design stage of it, that that number will come down some. That was a guess budget from just a pencil layout, measuring distances and stuff like that.
If you get approval, are you gonna build analysis before you get the sewer line run?
No, we can't. Your regulation will not allow a building permit on a house without the sewer in place. So it would go in with the subdivision. Yes, sir. Not only is that our desire, but your regulations still require that, so. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the general public comments on the zoning resolutions. Commissioner Satterfield, open the meeting.
If anyone would please stand, face the flag, and we'll have a pledge of allegiance. The commission, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For invocation, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us together today. Lord, we pray for your guidance in this meeting, that we make good decisions, Lord, and that we represent the folks of Loudoun County in the best way possible. Lord, we pray for our nation, pray for its leaders, pray for your direction in each and every case. These things we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, Tammy, call the roll.
Brewster?
Here.
Mears?
Here.
Early?
Here.
Tinker?
Here.
Satterfield?
Here.
Whitfield?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Dove?
Here.
Shaver?
There.
Waller?
Here.
Okay, you've all seen the agenda. I would entertain a motion to accept it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do have, I don't see it on here. If it pleases this commission, I would like to add the reappointment of Mr. Satterfield to the House Board. It's not been that long, but it was a replacement, and that term is actually ending. And so if this commission doesn't object, I'd like to add the reappointment of the commission.
I'd be glad to entertain it. Anybody have any problem? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as it's been updated.
Got it.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Ms. Commissioner Mears.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the June 1, 2020 Commission meeting minutes.
I make a motion, accept the minutes.
One, a couple of adjustments.
Go ahead.
Down toward the end, there are three motions that didn't have anybody as a motion and a second. It just said passed unanimously. All three of them were really, I should've written down the numbers. Don't worry about it right now, look at it later. But normally, it should always have whoever made a motion and a second pass unanimously. I think there was three in a row like that.
Then I missed it.
I may have, I may have it wrong. But anyhow, just to make that correction at your leisure, it was minor stuff.
Tammy, would you make a note, and we'll check that tomorrow morning? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay. All right, let me get my notes in here. Okay, Jim Jenkins, come on back up and do the first resolution, and we'll vote on it.
It's a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 of the Tennessee Code Annotated, to rezone approximately 14.4 acres from R1 Suburban Residential District to R1 Suburban Residential District with a PUD overlay. Loudoun County Tax Map 007, Parcels 002.04, 002.05 located at Hickory Creek Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee situated in the 5th Legislative District.
Mr. Chairman, that's what we discussed at length with the gentleman back here at the last workshop. For myself, nothing has changed. I understand he has an interpretation of regulations. We've been doing this a long, long time. We don't approve PUDs until there's sewer, so I'm going to, as one of the 50 representatives, make a motion, we deny that request.
I'll second his motion. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Dove. Any further discussion? And the motion is to deny it.
Yeah, I wanna ask Jim a question. So what is the, do they have what they need or not?
Well, the Planning Commission unanimously approved, you know, the PUD overlay. They do not have sewer at this time, and that is a requirement for a PUD development. They will be required to, sewer to be in, yeah, in order to...
Sewer plan or just a sewer?
Actually, to get a final plat approved, you have to have all your utilities in place to even get a final plat approval through the Planning Commission to start selling lots. I'm sorry.
Right. Because after development, or is this, are you talking about plat approved like pre-everything?
Like a final plat approval is when you're ready to sell lots. So even though they may not have it now, before they could ever sell a lot, they would have to have it.
Right, so they have the sewer in, it'll be developed, and then a final plat will be presented, and then approved.
They would have to have it in, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is...
Go ahead. I'm still not sure what the, I don't know why I'm so confused by it, but...
Policy makes practice, and we just don't ever approve PUDs without sewer. That's one of the whole reasons to ask for a PUD, is it heavier density, thicker density. Well, you can't do thicker density without sewer. And I don't know, these gentlemen don't know anything about it, but it's just been a real comfortable policy that, once you let it at the cat out of the bag, then it may or may not wind up what it wants to be. It makes it a lot easier to market the property. Property can change hands many times. But I don't think in all my PUD life, PUD operations, we've ever done one unless it has sewer to the property.
But no matter what, if you put the sewer there, in that their PUD requirement, I mean, someone could still come in and change the design of what they got, whether their sewer is already there, is that correct?
That, once it goes out of here, it's out of our hands. Once we approve whatever we approve, whether it's a rezone, a PUD, or whatever, we don't see it again. It all goes through the planning, mostly the BZA after that.
But that's not my question. My question is, once you get the sewer there, I mean, they can still make a change to their PUD, right?
You mean they can come in and apply for a PUD?
No, as they've got their PUD and their sewer's in. You're saying they have to have their sewer there before they can get the PUD overlay?
Correct.
Okay. So once the sewer's there and they come and apply for the PUD, they can still make a change to that PUD?
Once they get their sewer, yes. I mean, a PUD doesn't change.
You can do anything at any time after it's been approved.
A PUD's 2.5. 2.5 units per acre from, what a planned unit lets you do is it lets you violate zoning regulations. We allow two per acre everywhere in the county, except you get a PUD, you can have 2.5. So whatever they, whatever they would decide later on to design, to develop, or whatever it is they're wanting to do, that goes to planning. And what else a PUD allows you to do is instead of having to have 20,000 square feet, they can, they can make their houses much, much closer together.
Of course.
Smaller yards and that sort of stuff. But until they get the overlay...
So how is the sewer gonna hold them up, is what I wanna know? Is why do we have to put the sewer in first?
Because, how's that developer friendly? I mean, we're basically broke, yes? So we're like saying, hey, I want you as a developer to come out and spend $400,000 in my county, but we may or may not approve a PUD later, but hey, thanks for the sewer. That's counterproductive.
I'm just asking how the sewer, I mean, why do we put the sewer in first?
Before they get the PUD, just what the requirements have always been. You can't have denser development without public sewer.
But there's gotta be a reason why we do that.
Well, you can't have septic systems on smaller lots.
Well, they obviously made the attempt to get it.
You can't have your septic system on smaller lots. If you don't have a sewer, you gotta have a septic tank and drain field.
And of course, yeah.
So you can't get that in on smaller lots.
One thing with a PUD, you can never take it back. Once you give them a PUD, there's no taking a PUD back.
Well, we voted on the size of the PUD as we wanted, 2.5.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you can't take back a PUD once it's given. Just, that's something to keep in your mind.
Then we should have voted for it.
With all due respect for Mr. Shaver, and having done this in every jurisdiction from Jasper to Jellico, Nashville and all the way to Colorado and back over my 20 years, the provisions of 5.05 that says that the plans on how do you get a plan approved for PUD comes after you have a property zoned with the PUD overlay. We can never get to B without Step A first, which is allowing us to move forward, meeting the requirements of 5.05, which includes plans for sewer availability. If you choose tonight to approve a PUD overlay, that does not mean that we can go do 7,500 square foot lots with no sewer and get a plat recorded. We can't do it. We would violate every other regulation you have, and that could never happen. With the PUD overlay, if we don't do sewer, we would revert right back to R1 and do drain field lots. So this concept that the zoning somehow gives us the right to violate all the subdivision regulation, I don't understand because that's simply not the case. The Planning Commission, BZA, per your zoning regulations, control the approval of every plan that comes through the door to meet the requirements of your zoning resolutions, no matter what zone it's in. The commission's job is about growth and planned growth, and that's where, and with respect, I know you know what your job is, but that's where you select the zoning based on your 20-year and your long-range growth plan of what's appropriate, what is the appropriate use for this property in this location. The PUD overlay does not give us any rights to violate any of your regulations regarding the size of a lot without sewer. But as Ms. Hurley mentioned, we can't invest in this sewer if we don't even know if we can move forward with the plan. So the way that, the way that this is, in my feeble mind, supposed to work, from my years of experience, if you get the zoning that you want, that works with the community that you're in for that area, then we work within the subdivision regulations and zoning resolutions with the official to submit the plans to, in this case, the BZA, in other cases, the Planning Commission. And that would include not just our onsite development, but any offsite component of that development that would have to go hand in hand. In this case, it would be sewer. I have built pump stations, I have ran miles of gravity sewer to get to a piece of property to develop it. That's part of civil engineering, that's part of land development, is bringing the infrastructure to you. No different than in nearby counties, if the road's less than 18-foot on the road that I'm, on the property I'm wanting to develop, I've gotta widen the road. But they have to give me the zoning, and part of the approval of the plan before the development permit is issued includes the plans to widen the road. And before I get a final plat, meaning the infrastructure's complete and met all the requirements as approved, all those improvements have to be in place. So we're in a bit of a chicken in the egg here, what comes first. This effectively is saying, no new developments with the PUD anywhere in Loudoun County if it doesn't have sewer in front of it. And my question to Mr. Shaver is, if the sewer, if there was sewer there, but it was a one-inch pressure line on the other side of the street, would I still have sewer? But a one-inch won't serve my development. I'll have to upgrade the whole, I'll have to do the same thing.
All your building all over the world, that's fine. Loudoun County, we don't approve PUDs unless there is sewer to the property. That's just what our policy has been. Policy, practice tends to make policy. However you wanna interpret it, whatever you wanna interpret, if you think that property's valuable enough that you wanna invest in, you wanna invest in Loudoun County, run your sewer, then come back and get your PUD overlay.
I'm not sure.
I don't know why yours is different than every other one we've ever done in the history of Loudoun County.
I don't know any others that have gone that way. And in fact, well, that city of Loudoun across the river, when I did that...
There was one down on Bill Chapel Road that got a PUD and then put the sewer in.
They got a PUD and then put the sewer in?
Absolutely did.
Well, there you go. You just proved our point.
I'm sorry, the sewer's already there, I'm bad, my bad. Then they got the PUD.
Well, anyway, I've said my piece. I think a lot of y'all understand the process.
We don't do it that way. I'm sorry. You know, I understand all your nice things, but what it also does, it makes the property very more marketable if you could say, here, I have a greater density on the property.
I can tell right now I can sell them regardless.
That's fine with you.
Marketing today, but I can sell them. I got people begging for housing, begging for housing.
Well, you need to get with him after the meeting, y'all work out a deal and do that.
I'm just saying.
Commissioner Dove, now I've got a motion and a second on the floor to deny.
Because it's marketable because it's realistic, and people will get more here.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor to deny the zoning resolution. Any further discussion among the commissioners?
There be a way, Jim, that possibly the owner of the property, they have 30 days, if we pass this, possibly, and within 30 days, if they don't start writing a Lenore City a check and everything goes through, it would default.
You can't remove the PUD. I talked about it, it's three years, or maybe it's five years. I'll send you the document, cannot be removed.
The timeline would be much longer than 30 days for LCV to get a final plan and all that stuff.
I do have a question for Jim. Jim, does our board not know this rule and regulations? Why would they approve this? Why would they approve this if that is our rule?
This one in particular...
Why does it come before us for us to have to do that?
Right, this one in particular was mentioned to the Planning Commission, there was not sewer available at that property at that time. It's not at that property. Of course, there's just discussion of, I don't know...
So what was their discussion? Do you know?
Oh, ma'am, I can't recall. And y'all have the voting numbers, and I can't even recall what those final numbers were for the approve to disapprove.
I just can't understand why our board would pass something if that's our rule and regulations.
They do a lot of things. It's a little scary to let it go there.
Can we deny it?
Absolutely, no. No. No, we wouldn't.
You know, the Planning Commission can look at the concepts of what's being proposed and stuff, and then make the recommendation, obviously, to order it to you all for approval or denial. And I'm thinking that they did have some conceptual plans in place that they showed the Planning Commission at that time as what they had proposed. It doesn't mean anything. Officially, the preliminary plat's what matters in the end.
Any other discussion? If not, the motion is to... Have you heard from the people that live in Avalon?
I've not heard anything in regards to this development. No, sir.
I have.
I haven't personally, no, sir.
Well, see, the reason they're not here, I don't think, this evening, but they just expect us to go by the rules, and they've let us know that, so I'll work for those people. The people in Avalon are objecting to this. Oh, yeah. Just because of the increased traffic?
Density. No, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to deny it. So if you vote yes, it gets denied. If you vote no, it doesn't get denied.
It doesn't get denied.
At this time.
At this time. Tammy, call the roll.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
No.
Tinker?
I think I want to follow the policy over the practice, and I'll say no.
You would say yes to that, or...
I say no.
Okay.
Satterfield?
No means go along with it?
No means they can do it.
No means they can do it, yes?
Yes means no, they can't do it.
That's the motion. What do you think, Pat?
Mears?
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Dove?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
What was it?
Eight in favor, or eight's voted yes and two voted no.
Okay, eight to two, this was upheld, and the motion is to deny it has been upheld. Okay, next one, Jim.
No, sir.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to deny it. So if you vote yes, it gets denied. If you vote no, it doesn't get denied.
It doesn't get denied.
At this time. At this time. Tammy, call the roll.
Mears.
Hi.
Hurley.
No.
Tinker.
I think I want to follow the policy over the practice, and I'll say no.
You would say yes then?
I said no. I said no.
Okay.
Satterfield.
No means go along with it.
No means they can do it.
No means they can do it.
Yes means no, they can't do it.
That's the motion. What do you think, Pat? Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Duff.
Aye.
Shaver.
Uh.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
What was it?
Eight voted yes and two voted no.
Okay, eight to two, this was upheld, and the motion is to deny it has been upheld. Okay, next one, Jim.
This is a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 of Tennessee Code Annotated to rezone approximately 38.1 acres from A2 Rural Residential District to A1 Agricultural Forestry District with a T1 overlay. Loudoun County Tax Map 056, Parcel 181.00 located at 5378 Steaky Creek Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee situated in the 4th Legislative District.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a few issues with this resoning, really too many for me to go into, so I'm just going to ask that we deny this request.
Okay.
I'll take the motion.
You got a motion to deny the request by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Satterfield. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to deny it, so a yes vote will deny it.
Yes is a no.
Yes is a no. You guys get me confused. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Tammy, call the roll.
Hurley.
No.
Tinker.
No.
Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yeah.
Duff.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Yes.
Mears.
Yes.
Okay. Eight to. That one gets denied by a vote of eight to two. Thank you, Jim.
Hey, he drove all the way in, he's got to do something, you know.
We're going to court.
So far, we haven't been in court.
I think they should have checked their zoning before they went there.
I'm with you.
I just don't want nobody to be mad at me. We want all coming down. There ain't nobody up here.
Why would they need 38 acres for a tower?
On a hundred by hundred plot.
You feed the light as much as you can, you get whatever you need.
Oh my God.
All right, buddy, you have a appointment you want to make.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coach Satterfield took over on the task board, I guess about a year ago, maybe. It was the reappointment when Mr. Goddard passed, and so Mr. Goddard's, Satterfield's term is now up, and I'd like him to be reappointed to the task board.
Make a motion to approve that recommendation.
Take on the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve Commissioner Satterfield to the task board. Any further discussion?
Please second it.
May your statements--
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard, Coach.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Director of Accounts and Budget, Tracy Blair.
Thank you, sir. These are amendments to the current year fiscal year 1920 funds. They're all listed, County General, Public Libraries, Recycling Center, Highway Department, General Purpose School, School Federal Projects, General Capital Projects, and Highway Capital Projects. They were all reviewed by the Budget Committee and recommended. There was one omission that I would like to make commission aware of. We need an amendment in our budget for autopsies. That budget is completely expensed right now, and we will receive an invoice in July for the month of June. I'm guessing at the amount, based on what we've done this year, and I'm requesting an additional $10,000 in that budget. Other than that, all of the amendments are as they were when they were considered by you.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion, we approve all of them together, including the $10,000. How much does an autopsy cost? $1,850.
Would you like for us to sign the other one?
Maybe after tonight.
Maybe after.
We got a motion and a second by Commissioner Brewster. Okay, any further discussions?
Can we pay for every autopsy in the city? Will they pay in the county? Yep.
And I'm going to deny delay getting an autopsy as long as I can. Okay, any further discussion? There's money involved, call the roll.
Tinker.
Because I'm an employee of the Board of Education, have a conflict of interest and proposal, that be voted. However, declare that my argument, my vote, answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens as body of events. How about aye?
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Duff.
Aye.
Shaver.
Uh.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Because I am not an employee, I can say aye.
I'm retired.
Mears.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is Commissioner Mears.
Just one other thing, prior to the meeting, you received a copy of the report on debt obligation for the refinancing that we did on the education debt. It has been filed with the state and required to file a copy with commission, so you have your copy of that, as well as the summary financial statements for the month of June. We will be posting additional entries tomorrow, so this is kind of incomplete, but I wanted you to have a copy anyway.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, next up is Commissioner Mears.
Waller, are you ready? Maria Almanez, Amber Bennett, Karen Glaco, Carol Shoshy, Timothy Grinstaff, Mindy Marshall, Richard Prophet, William Stapleton, Jessica Step, Teresa Wilson.
I don't know, I think we ain't kind of got you on that one.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I'm going to come to the end of the commission meeting, I'm going to call from the chair.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the regular monthly meeting.
Okay.